Pastor Lee Delbridge of the... Where's Lee at? He's out there amongst them. This Morning Christian Church, 910 Concord Road. And Lee's gonna give us our invocation and lead us and pledge the flag. So, um... That last guy signs up. The Lord's right behind you if you could... Everyone, please rise. We ask that you be... We ask... And then to give them the courage to do that right thing. It's in the name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Agenda changes, as I mentioned before we started the meeting. Item, let's see, B, public hearings only request. R15 RED conditional for two single-family homes at an intensity of 5.2 acres units per acre. I'm not gonna go through all that, but that will be tabled once we get to it till August the 6th. Item C is already listed on your agenda, is going to be tabled. That will be tabled not till August the 6th, but August the 20th. These are both that the applicant's request, so once we get to those, we will table them. So there won't be any public comment or public input on that. Under the Merrill report, if you notice that there's not but four people up there, that's because there's not but four council people. We, Corky Weft is out of town on business. I think Ron Fennler's on vacation. And we still have a vacancy in Ward 6. So I'm hoping July the 24th, there'll be an election. So before we get into the public hearing portion, I'm gonna ask if there's anyone that is running for public office in that runoff election that would like to say anything briefly. I'd give you that opportunity at this time. So just step forward, identify yourself, tell us who you are. About a 15-second comment is good. Yeah, no, 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 no.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Adala Moore. I am running for Smyrna City Council, Ward 6. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you and the community. Yes, indeed, in just over a week, this race will have been determined. And hopefully, at the next council meeting, there will be someone represent... Finally, representing Ward 6. I now know why political campaigns are held in November. Canvassing in July is brutal. Even so, I have enjoyed meeting my neighbors. Standing on the doorstep, having a conversation about our concerns in the city has been the best adventure of this race. And these concerns, for instance, are smart growth, which is not a new concept, but is a concept that's growing in popularity because it addresses all aspects of the community. It's wise development and growth. It's about livability while still maintaining the character of a city. Our schools, although not under the direct responsibility of the council, nevertheless need our commitment and increasing support. And I just wanna give a shout-out to those parents in our community who are committed to sending their children to public school and who have organized education advocacy groups in order to fundraise and give additional resources to our school. Safety in our neighborhoods, of ourselves, of our streets, and for our children means we must maintain a fully-staffed police force, which I understand from Mayor Bacon's city address, state of the city address, that we do not have at the moment. And I consider this an immediate concern. I want more community engagement, and I have some ideas for how to do that. We have a wonderful city that we should all be very proud of. And partly because 20 years ago or so, Mayor Bacon and his council then had the vision to create a city center, a heart for this community. It is where we come to have our meetings, our celebrations. It's where we come to learn and to exercise. And we all should be very, very proud. To me, community engagement is exercising that pride. So I'm asking Ward 6 residents this evening, what better way to show your commitment, your pride, and your engagement than coming out and voting for your city council member? I'm asking for your vote because I believe Smyrna has a bright and prosperous future. And I would like to go hand-in-hand with you into that future as your city council representative. Thank you so much.
That's 15 seconds, right on the button. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Tim Gould. Running for the open seat for Ward 6. Running for several reasons, to do my part to help keep Smyrna going in the right direction. But a couple of key issues are making sure folks understand the zoning process and show up as they are tonight, support our schools, and be a proactive and in-touch city council member. And keep it short and sweet. Ask for your vote on July 24th. Thank you.
Anyone else that I don't recognize? Okay, good deal. Under item 4, land issues, zonings, and annexation. Item A is 2017-357, public hearings only request. Z17-021, rezoning from GC to MU conditional for the development of a mixed-use project, 10.4 acres, land lots 845 and 846, at 3110 Sports Avenue, JLB Realty LLC. Ms. Jones, the background.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. JLB Realty is requesting to rezone 12.495 acres at 3110 Sports Avenue from GC to MU conditional for the development of a 325-unit multifamily development with 3,040 square feet of accessory retail space and 6,960 square feet of live-work commercial floor area. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing Cumberland Community Church building and build the new multifamily development. The rezoning request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the June 11, 2018, meeting, and was recommended for denial by a vote of 7 to 0. Community Development Staff recommends denial of this request. Community Development Director Ken Sudrith is here to provide additional information.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this rezoning or this zoning request? If there's... And I know a lot of people signed up. And here's the way that we're gonna do it. We'll have a presentation by our staff. Then we'll have the developer or the applicant will make his presentation. And then we will take comments from the... If you'd like to say something. We need to get you sworn in, though. And I like to do that all at one time. So even if you want to speak, and then you end up not wanting to, I still just wanna swear you in one time. So if there's anyone here that wants to make any public comment, you need to step forward at this time and be sworn in. Maybe I should've asked who doesn't wanna make comment. Oh, this is...
All right. You guys all raise your hand. Y'all saw what we swear to the testimony you given this matters. The truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
All right, so everybody have a seat. I know the applicant's here somewhere. So here's the way that we're doing this. And it was not my first rodeo. So please listen to the testimony. If one person gets up to speak, and the person before them has said something that they were gonna say, after about a couple of times, we get it. So you don't have to, you know, keep saying it over and over again. We'll get it. You will be given five minutes, max. There'll be a timer up here. And we always have good luck with everybody being very respectful of one another. I will tell you this, in the 38 years I've been in office, zonings are very emotional. And so just take a deep breath, relax, and we'll hear your testimony. So I know some folks have signed up too. Where's that? That ain't... Oh, this ain't nothing. I'll try to, once we get to time for public testimony, I will read from this list. And then for those that are not on the list, then we'll... You can come up and speak after that. So, all right, so I'm gonna ask at this time... This is in Derek Norton's district, but I know that he's gonna ask Ken Sudrith. First of all, I know the applicant's back there somewhere. Yeah, okay, I see ya.
Mr. Sudrith, please.
Yeah, if you'll do that. This is Ken Sudrith, our Community Development Director. Ken?
Thank you, Mayor. As Ms. Jones had indicated, this did go to the Planning Commission back in June. Staff had recommended denial. Planning and zoning recommended unanimous denial, which was 7-0 on that. What you will see on the screen is the zoning map with the parcels outlined. There you go. Thank you. In sort of a light blue line. This is at the end of Sports Avenue. You can see the existing church building there. So we're actually talking about three different lots are involved in this. Has already been stated, it's 325 multifamily units. And when you combine the retail space with the live-work space, it's approximately 10,000 square feet. The zoning request is going from an existing GC, which is general commercial, to MU conditional, meaning mixed use with conditions. With regard to the future lane use map, it is a regional activity center. The proposed use would fall within those parameters of a regional activity center, so there is no need to change the future lane use map. Now, what we have on the screen now is the proposed site plan. And bear with me over the next little bit as I will put fly-ins on the map and take them off to outline what is actually being requested here. So first, we have the location of the multifamily buildings. And as you can see, they are three or four stories, depending if they have a basement and from, obviously, which direction you're looking at. There is a proposed clubhouse and leasing office that would be right sort of in the center of the development, but basically at the end and the cul-de-sac, right off the cul-de-sac of Sports Avenue. A pool and a pool house. Uber cafe. Then, as the live-work units I had mentioned earlier. Then the retail space. You can see this is now a separate building onto itself. This is the new proposed right-of-way. And just to remind everybody, the LCI Spring Road Plan indicated several different possible points of interconnecting parcels so that a parallel road to Spring Road could ultimately occur. And the decision was made that we would do this upon rezoning and new development request. We actually did this with... At our previous meeting, where we dealt with the storage unit facility that was further down Spring Road there, behind the racetrack. They also reserved their proposed right-of-way. This right-of-way here would line up with that right-of-way, although there is a track of land between those two points that just illustrates how we're trying to build that right-of-way. So they have indeed proposed the new right-of-way. Here are the detention facilities. These will be underground detention. There is some stream buffer issues in that lower-right corner, and there is some encroachment issues as well. A 100-foot power easement runs that same corner. There's also variances being requested off of the MU requested classification. The first one is to reduce their front setback from 20 feet to 0 feet for Building 600. You can see the red arrow there. Staff is not supportive of this. Neither was the Planning Commission. There is a request to increase the maximum density for the site from 25 units to the acre to 26 units to the acre. Staff was supportive of that. Increase the maximum rental units from 15% to 97%. Staff and Planning Commission are not supportive of that. To eliminate the requirement for rental units to be integrated with non-residential uses, and staff and Planning Commission are not supportive. There's a request to reduce the landscape easement from 15 to 5 feet. Again, staff and Planning Commission are not supportive of that variance. Parking areas to be perpendicular to the building entrances. We're not supporting a waiver of that requirement. Nor are we supporting reducing the landscape in the parking area from 10% to 5%. Again, Planning Commission supported those stances that staff had taken as well. The eighth variance here is allow angled or perpendicular parking in the right-of-way. And as you can see, as you go towards the cul-de-sac, there's angled parking. We do not allow backing directly into the street anymore with that. And so staff is and the Planning Commission were not supportive of that. I'll get into that a little bit later as well. The final variance was to reduce the rear setback from 100 feet to 40 feet. The rear being where the railroad track is, and staff was supportive of that. Staff has supported that reduction. That comes from our design guidelines. But because of the railroad track, we supported that in the previous request with the storage units. All right, so here we have two views of the building elevations. Both of it is as you come down Sports Avenue. This is showing the diagonal parking there. But this gives you a general idea of what you would be looking at as you came down Sports Avenue. The Spring Road LCI master plan, just to, you know, give you a relationship on that. You can see that there was, you know, the idea was try to get some interconnection over to Cumberland Boulevard at some point. There are three possibilities. The one that's in the center is the one that is being retained and part of this request, as well as the previous storage unit request. So that's the one that's being focused on at the moment. These are pictures of this subject property. We all know it as the church. You've got the parking out front. These are, you know, these top twos are taken from the cul-de-sac looking in into the site. And again, just of adjacent properties. Staff's recommendation, which is also the Planning Commission's recommendation, given their recommendation, is for denial of this request from GC to MU conditional, 4 to 325 units, plus the retail space and the live-work space, basically for the following reasons. The LCI study states that within that Sports Avenue redevelopment node that the housing type should vary from attached to detached townhomes to cottages and et cetera dwelling units. Excuse me. Within this proposal, there is no mix of housing or ownership types. I've already talked about the nine variances that have been requested. As you saw, staff only supports two of those. In terms of the quote "mixed" portion of this request, approximately 3% of the overall proposed square footage of the development, meaning what is actually being built, not the acreage, but what is actually being built, is being used for something other than rental units. In essence, what we did was not get into a debate or anything. We combined the retail with the live-work units, and that came up with the 3%. Everything else had to do with the apartment. So this proposal, initially in staff's opinion and now in the Planning Commission's opinion, is a development of an apartment complex and not really a mixed use. The mixed-use developments that y'all have approved, that Mayor and Council have approved recently, either contain a variety of housing, as in Riverview, or contain several different land uses, as in Belmont, or had no less than 15% retail when there were only two uses proposed, as across the street in Juncle, where you had retail and then you had residential with the apartments. And in those cases, that was just 15%, that was at least 15% retail. So the proposed application is only providing 3% of the non... Or so, to non-apartment uses. So it falls below levels that the city has already previously established. In addition, there's a policy that Mayor and Council has stated, both in words and in actions, that they would want all future apartment requests to be integrated into a large mixed-use development or combined with a tear-down and replacement of an existing apartment complex. Standalone multifamily developments, therefore, are no longer to be encouraged nor deemed appropriate as it's been determined that they rarely contribute to the quality of life or sense of place if they're just standing by themselves. Lastly, approval of the request would break with past policies, again, set by Mayor and Council. And if approved, this would be the most unbalanced split of land uses allowed in this type of mixed use and would at best only marginally contribute to achieving the city's goals for the Spring Road corridor. I'll leave you with a proposed site plan without all the fly-ins, so you can reference it if need be. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. Obviously, as we always do in the reports that we give you, there's a lot more detail, a lot more pages than just this representation during the meeting. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, either from the presentation here or from that report that was sent to you last week.
Any questions, Mr. Sudrith? Okay, thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
The applicant, would you please step forward? Awful quiet, it's peaceful.
It's very quiet. Unnerving.
Mr. Moore?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kevin Moore, here on behalf of the applicant and owner in this application for rezoning. I wanna go through and just provide some additional context, some counterpoints for you to consider to staff's recommendations, to highlight some areas that we believe were not included in staff's recommendations and in their explanation for their recommendation, and review what has been proposed generally and specifically, highlighting what we believe to be your important points for you to consider. I'm gonna turn now back to that site plan, just for... Rather look at it than when I look up, I see my face. Rather avoid that. This project is proposed as a mixed-use project. It's 325 apartment units. It's nearly 10,000, in essence, 10,000 square feet of retail office commercial space. That space is about 3,000 square feet of retail that's contained within the first floor of the standalone building that was pointed out by Mr. Sudrith. That's actually a building that has first-floor retail and residential units above it. Also, there's nearly 7,000 square feet of live-work space. And that's true live-work, where you have a home and a unit that the first floor is commercial space, office space, with connectivity to the unit residential portion above. So it creates true live-work space within this community as documented on the site plan itself. In terms of the surrounding area, we believe that the surrounding area actually has a big impact on the consideration of this application for rezoning. This property is integrated. It's integrated into a vibrant commercial corridor of Spring Road and Cumberland Boulevard area. This property happens to lie at the end of a cul-de-sac, Sports Avenue, which is a single road with a single traffic light onto Spring. What's at the front of this property? Well, what fronts Spring at the intersection of Sports Avenue and Spring Road is a Burger King, an Indian restaurant, and a extended stay hotel. That's what's at the front of this property and in front of this property. Why does it have limited commercial availability for this proposed mixed-use project? It's because of where it sits at the end of the street. But it also does, very importantly, integrates into that environment. And importantly, about those existing uses, which are also there at the front of Sports Avenue and Spring, those uses aren't dilapidated, they're not rundown. Those uses are vibrant, economic uses, and will be so for the foreseeable future. They're gonna be there. It's part of the Spring Road and Cumberland Boulevard economic corridor and commercial corridor. They're gonna remain, and they'll be there for a long time. They're vibrant and useful and have plenty of useful life and do very well for what they do. The larger area as well has transformed, primarily due to the introduction of SunTrust Stadium and the Battery. Has transformed the area with a renewed focus on land uses, on redevelopment, and on development in this particular area. Not just this one spot, but in the area as a whole. And why has that occurred? It's occurred because of that injection of new development brought about by the Battery, brought about by the SunTrust Stadium location. But what it's also injected in this area is a renewed sense of focus of where we would like for people to live and where do people wanna live. They don't wanna live on the outskirts. They don't wanna live further away. They wanna live right here. And providing this as an opportunity for people to live right here in close proximity to those activities, to those commercial activities, to those retail opportunities, is something that has received a bunch of new focus and renewed focus as a result of the transformations that have occurred. But those new focuses and that new development and those new opportunities for residential living have to take place not on a blank canvas of some LCI study, but in the reality of what's out there, which is economic vibrancy. The businesses, the shopping centers, the retail stores that are along Cumberland and Spring at this location feeding into 41 are vibrant. They're doing well, and they'll continue to do well. So any type of redevelopment of this site or any other sites or assemblage of sites in this area has to take place within what's already there and become integrated into what's already there. And do that in the best way. what's already there, and do that in the best way possible. The highlights of this site plan do that. They integrate into the existing commercial corridor that is already there to provide that mixed use on a huge scale. When you look at these proposed site plans, when you look at the renderings, what you're seeing is the creation of a streetscape to invite you down Sports Avenue so that it can be a part of that existing community of commercial and retail opportunities. That's what's created, is a streetscape that's not there today. What's also created is the protected new right-of-way. That's part of the L C I study. That's part of the vision for the city of Smyrna in this area is to create that opportunity. Somebody's recording this, but the, that protected, not me and not anybody, I've heard.
That's after your practice speech, wasn't it?
Might have been. Might have been. If only I knew who he was. The protected corridor that's in place here was done by the applicant and is a provision to the site plan, so that that could satisfy that need for the city and provide that. But not only is it just simply set in a side right-of-way, it became an active part of this plan. This developer, this applicant, J L B, is going to build that right-of-way for the city and put it in place so that it is there to provide for that future connectivity. What's on the bottom side of this, the property, is Colonial Pipeline property. Who knows if it'll ever be in a position to be acquired for a new road across Colonial? But it's there if needed, and going further in the other direction, that connectivity can occur even more so. What's also provided on this site plan is the sense of place, that when you arrive at this cul-de-sac, you're creating a sense of place, you have parking, that while staff does not support it, it's the same parking type of arrangement that you find downtown when you walk out straight out of these doors, to create that sense of place where people can come, they can park, they can visit. The retail establishments, which we believe will be, have to be destination-driven restaurant establishments or other type of destinations, so that there's a welcoming sense of place when you get there for the residents that hopefully that would live here. We've provided for the Uber Cafe, we've provided for the integration of transportation so that people can get out and enjoy what the type of residents want to enjoy here in terms of their modes of transportation. And primarily, we've also provided that pedestrian connectivity with the sidewalks now that will connect out to Spring, which therefore connect down to forty-one into the surrounding area, as well as to the new street connection that we'll be providing here. In terms of this property being mixed use and the criticism of it that it's not enough of a mixed use, it's as much mixed use as it can possibly be, given the limitations. But more importantly, it's as much a mixed use as can be established in the context of what's there. The opportunity to wipe away all the existing uses that are there and then create some new development from the ground up is not an opportunity that's going to come along from an economic standpoint. What this proposal does do is meet and satisfy what's consistent with what the property can produce in terms of providing for the needed residential core in this area and to put people where they want to live and provide for that opportunity where none other exists. The staff report itself makes much mention of the L C I study and which really provides the basis for the staff's recommendation for denial, but there are no references to the Georgia Tech study, which was equally done at the same time and which was also done as a study for the city of Smyrna. The Georgia Tech land use study for this area actually showed this area and the character of this area recommending up to thirty units per acre, recommending additional multifamily units be placed in this area of Sports Avenue, recommending exactly what we're proposing, twenty-six units per acre with mixed-use opportunities and taking advantage of the commercial corridor and vibrant commercial corridor that's already there. What the staff report also states is that your land use plan, future land use plan, holds this property in a regional activity center, and this proposal is consistent with your future land use plan. What the staff report also states is that this proposed use will not cause or result in an incompatible use, given the surrounding area. It also states, the staff report finds, that this use actually enhances the architectural standards of the area. The staff report finds and concludes that this proposed use will not have an impact, negative impact, on schools. The staff report finds and concludes that the proposed project is not expected to have any burdensome impact on traffic in the area. That's not our finding, that's staff's finding. That finding was further supported by our independent traffic study, which was submitted as part of this application. That traffic study also showed that in terms of the level of services and any kind of significant delay does not occur at the major intersections. That traffic study shows that the delay or the impact on traffic is a fourteen-second delay at the intersection of Sports Avenue and Cumberland Boulevard. That's the traffic impact, fourteen seconds in the morning commute. That's by a traffic engineer. That's the delay or the traffic impact that's found with this proposed project. This proposal and community for J L B proposes a first-class mixed-use project. It provides opportunities for live, work, and play where that opportunity doesn't exist in this immediate area at Sports Avenue and Spring. It takes advantages of every opportunity this property provides to meet and exceed the goals of the city, despite the limitations of that surrounding area and where this property finds itself at the end of Sports Avenue. What we're asking this council to do, and what we'd urge your consideration, is that that opportunity should respectfully not be missed in this chance, in this proposal, to not miss the opportunity to move forward with this project and what it can provide in terms of meeting the city's vision for this area. With that, we respectfully request your approval of the application for rezoning. I'm here, I can answer any questions at the appropriate time, as well as the various representatives of J L B, our project engineers and so forth are all here and can answer any technical questions that you may have, and we appreciate your consideration here tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Moore at this time?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, now here comes the fun part. For those folks that were sworn in and are on this list, after I get through this list, I'm going to go by the list first, remembering if you say it once, twice, third time, we got it, so. Scott McDeerman, fourteen oh five Wedsmore Way, Smyrna, Georgia. Hit the button, he's up there. No, you.
Okay.
Is that what's beating? Oh, there we go, there we go. You're good, you're good.
Thank you, mayor and council, I appreciate it.
There's a timer right here, can y'all see that?
Yes.
You're twelve minutes gone.
I've already missed twelve seconds. So thank you, board and council, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am Scott McDeerman, I'm representing members of the Smyrna community who have signed a petition to oppose the rezoning of the property at Spring Road and Sports Avenue to build a three hundred and twenty-five-unit apartment complex. We believe that this rezoning request is bad for the city of Smyrna for the following reasons. A development of this size will add an additional five hundred cars to the already crowded Spring Road corridor. This will increase the commute times along Spring Road during morning and evening rush hours from Cobb Parkway to Atlanta Road. This property is locked by the C S X Railway and Georgia Power Colonial Pipeline facilities that restrict entry and exit to a single point. There's no other direct alternatives for Smyrna residents to reach the Cumberland Business District and I seventy-five that avoids the Sports Avenue intersection. Also, three new apartment complexes, which include Belmont Hills, Johnquill Plaza, and the Battery, have been built in the Smyrna area in the last two years. This has created excess apartment capacity that has not been fully leased. The planned development of the Emerson Center property, which is just right down the road, will also add additional excess capacity that will only make the situation worse. The citizens of Smyrna believe that we should encourage developers to redevelop existing decades-old properties like the fourteen-acre Galleria Courtyards on Spring Road, which is almost directly across the street from this proposed development. The proposed apartment complex on Sports Avenue provides no benefit to the citizens of Smyrna and therefore does not merit a rezoning of the property. Argyle Elementary School does not have the capacity to support additional students from this development. The Cobb County Board of Education has actually done a study, and their study says that Argyle will exceed its capacity by a hundred and fifty students, or almost a hundred and fifty students by 2019. And lastly, Cumberland Community Church had multiple offers for their property, including offers that didn't require a rezoning. They chose the option that gives them the greatest financial benefit but has the largest negative impact to the members of the Smyrna community. We understand their desire to receive a large financial reward for their investment, but we believe that the option that they selected will negatively impact the life of Smyrna residents for decades to come. We ask for your consideration to deny this zoning request. Thank you.
Jane Cantiff, is that right? Fourteen ninety-six Roswell Street, Southeast?
Close enough.
That's good.
Good evening to the city council members and ladies and gentlemen. I have lived in Ward Three for twelve out of the last fourteen years, first at fourteen ninety, Roswell Street, and then right next door at fourteen ninety-six. So I left and had to come back. I've also been a member of Cumberland Community Church since nineteen ninety-seven, and so I'm a committed member of that congregation as well. And I'm here to support the J L B Enterprises and Cumberland Community Church proposal. I want to thank everyone who is in a leadership position and the decision-making associated with this proposal. That includes the Cumberland Church pastors and elder board, J L B Enterprises, the city of Smyrna Planning and Zoning, the city council members, and Mayor Bacon. I believe that you have been placed in your positions now for times such as this. Everyone here on the smartest city council brings unique and diverse skills to the table, real estate development, property management, entertainment, marketing. And your mission and your purpose is to make the best decision based on your collective knowledge, understanding, and experience for this and for the city of Smyrna and its residents. I certainly don't claim to have the background and skills that would be required to do this, and so I'm grateful and humbled in after participating in this from an outsider's perspective of the job that you have, so thank you. The challenges with this property are many, the railroad, the utility, banked by apartments on one side, single access point, I didn't realize what a challenge that would be from a construction standpoint for a much larger facility on that property, if leaving it as general commercial and what that would bring. And no frontage on Atlanta Road, which, associated with the other developments that have been spoken of, they all had frontage on the main thoroughfares on which they sit. So that will be a challenge for other developments that could potentially be there. So I do want to emphasize Cumberland Community Church's contributions to this community. We have quarterly community service where the entire congregation basically descends on one of your schools, and we do renovation, cleaning, painting, you name it. And we work side-by-side with the school teachers and staff to do that. The collective and the echo effect, the collective actually trained quite a few folks to build the stadium, and then also the echo effect, which is an after-school program. And the church has also built a legacy of giving back to the community that has a ripple effect across all of our lives. And so it's not just the immediate effect of the church and what it does, but it's also the members and what they're doing in the community as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alicia Waldrop, how'd that do on it first name?
Well, it's just plain O'Alice.
I started to go with that.
Just plain O'Alice.
Man, I cannot block, unbelievable. What's, it's A L Y C E.
That's my claim to fame, hey.
I could have done the A L I C E. Okay, Alice.
It's just Alice.
Nine thirty-six Hidden Falls Lane.
Yes. I've been a proud resident of Smyrna for almost twenty years and have seen it grow from a town in the suburbs, suburbs of Atlanta into a vibrant progressive city. Truly, our Smyrnas are considered the up-and-coming place to live for the millennials, school-age families, as well as baby boomers. Wise planning on the part of our city officials has made this happen. I have studied the proposal for J L B, and I believe it will be a valuable asset to the Spring Road corridor. It's not just another apartment building, it will have a very high standard of living and amenities that we, as a city, will be proud of. Additionally, Cumberland Community Church is just what the name says. It is a genuine community church that has committed caring heart for the well-being of the city of Smyrna and its diverse residents. I sincerely ask you to please consider approving the J L B proposal. Thank you.
Lisa Ruff, twelve Harmony Walk Place.
Good evening. I just wanted to say that I do support Cumberland Community Church move and the J L B application.
I could hear you fine, go ahead. I was fine, go ahead.
Okay, but I do support Cumberland Community Church move and the J L B application.
Thank you. Rose Mary, yeah. Twenty-seven thirty-one Woodland Terrace, Southeast Smyrna.
Yes, hello, mayor and council, and I'm here to support the move for Cumberland Community Church, which I belong to, and I've lived in the area approximately five years. I live at twenty-seven thirty-one Woodland Terrace and in Ward One, and I also support J L B's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Wilkins, nineteen twenty Windridge Drive, and Taylor Walker, is that, y'all just save space together, you'll be next, okay? They've signed up on the same plan. Kyle Wilkins, nineteen twenty Windridge Drive, Smyrna, Georgia.
Mayor and council, thank you for your time. I'm Ward Six, a resident of Smyrna about six years. I want to speak in support of the rezoning to M U conditional as it currently stands. There could be development of a much, a property that's much farther removed from the current L C I study. I think this is the most feasible opportunity in front of us that makes the most efficient use of the space and brings population density to support the already investment that's been put into the many retail spaces around there, rather than providing more and more competition and driving up further storefronts that may not get access down that road. This will bring people to support what you've already built there. And so again, I want to speak in support of the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Taylor Walker, thirty-four thirty-five Lee Street, Smyrna, Georgia.
Thank you. Good evening. Taylor Walker, Ward Six. Is that better? Can you guys hear me? Yep, good. I just want to let you guys know that I am supporter of Cumberland Community Church and the J L B rezoning application. I think this application maximizes what the land use is and how it's set up currently. I also, I think it provides walkable access to one of the best mixed-use facilities in the state of Georgia with SunTrust Park. I think it adds a lot of value to that whole corridor, and again, I support Cumberland Community Church and the application of J L B.
Thank you very much. Caitlin Walker, is that right? You got the same address this other guy had, thirty-four thirty-five Lee Street?
I live with that man.
You're kidding.
Hello, I'm Caitlin Walker, I live in Ward Six as well. I grew up actually just fifteen minutes down the road in West Cobb my entire life, and if you would have told me just ten years ago that I would be starting a family and buying a home in Smyrna, I would have laughed at you because no one wanted to live here. But that has changed, and I really believe that's because of a lot of the new local restaurants, the new parks that are brought, including SunTrust Park and the Battery, and also resort-style communities that are now coming to our area. It's really drawing young professionals and young families to the area like myself and my husband, and we love Smyrna now. my husband, and we love Smyrna now, and we want all of our friends to live here. I know change is really hard for everyone, but I really do believe that these new developments are revitalizing this community that we all love and live in, and for that reason, I support the rezoning and JLB development.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alexandra Thompson, 3014 Montclair Circle, Smyrna, Georgia.
Got it perfectly right.
I'm on a roll.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to speak. Like Mayor Bacon said, my name is Alexandra Thompson. I'm 30 years old, and I currently live in Ward Six, and I love this city, so much so that I actually considered for the future running for city council, because I adore what this city is turning into, what it continues to grow into, and that really excites me. I'm very much in favor of the rezoning for the mixed-use project. And what excites me is that with this addition, and I've seen some pictures, it's really gorgeous and pretty sexy as well, what I really get excited about is the fact that the mixed-use property will absolutely become a community amenity for both younger and older people alike. What young adults like myself, along with older adults like so many of the empty nesters around here, really want is to be able to stumble upon fun, especially if you can stumble upon it on foot, which is already happening, and like others have said, with the closeness of the Battery, there's even more so there. With this community addition, we will absolutely have more of that, and like I said, more of that that also looks pretty sexy and pretty, and, you know, when I first saw the renderings, I turned to my husband and said, "They're really, really pretty. I can't wait to see them." So it will absolutely become an amenity, and that really excites me, along with pretty much everybody else I've talked to about it. So thank you for allowing us time to talk, and please consider. Positive.
Ben Thompson, 3014 Montclair Circle. Don't mess this up now, she's doing good.
Got to follow the wife. Thank you again for letting me speak for a moment. I'll be brief, but my wife and I have lived in Smyrna for about two and a half years now and absolutely love this city and this community. And I, I support JBL's proposal to rezone, and my, my sister actually lived up in a JBL community up in Alpharetta, and it's a, it's a beautiful facility, absolutely stunning, and, and like others have echoed before, definitely would bring young people of all ages to that facility, so I stand in support.
Thank you very much. Marie Smith, 1215 Bank Street.
Hello, I'm Marie Smith from Ward Three, and I'm opposed to the rezoning based on traffic issues already in place, issues with infrastructure, then creating more rental properties as opposed to ownership position in the, in the city. I think ownership invests long-term, not rental properties. Thank you.
Kay Brazel, 1225 Bank Street.
Hey Brazel, and I am opposed to the event down there that we're talking about, mainly because I think we need to trust the Planning and Zoning Committee and the staff, and if they suggest, and they've done all the research and the homework that I haven't done, and it's their recommendation that we do not build that facility that's been planned, then I don't think we should, so I would like a no vote. Thank you.
Michelle Padell, 1235 King Springs Court, sorry.
Hi, I'm Michelle Zabel, and I have been living in Smyrna for 11 years, and I love Smyrna. And as my husband knows, I plan on living here until the day I die, God willing, and I want the best for Smyrna. And I, I believe that the JLB rezoning application, if it was allowed to come to successful fruition, would be a tremendous asset to the city, and I fully support Cumberland Community Church and the rezoning application.
Thank you. Carolyn Jacobs, 5004 Bell Drive, Smyrna, Georgia.
Good evening, Mayor Bacon and the co-council members. My name is Carolyn Jacobs, and I live at 5004 Bell Drive. And I am very confused with Smyrna Community Church. You talk about, you know, they, they talk about what all they do and the beauty of it, and that's all been good, but you, we have to realize that you, a lot of you don't even live in Ward One. I live in Ward One. I travel, I mean, it's walking distance from my home. I'm only a mile, I can literally walk to the park, but it's a lot of traffic, Mayor Bacon. And I'm only eight miles from my office. It takes me 45 minutes to get there. And for you, talking, you know, the members of the church talking about the beauty of it, if you know the story of Solomon Gomor, when Solomon, not Solomon, when Lot and Abraham separated, Lot chose the beauty, and look what he went through, you know, because of the, what he saw. And right now, you, like I said, you, they had plenty of opportunities to choose a different buyer for the property, but they chose the money. But they don't, you're not realizing that God don't need you to do what needs to be done. If you, if they had taken the lower amount, God could have blessed them with that, not with 10 or 12 million dollars to do what they would like to do. So I pray that we do do the right thing and to deny it, because as I'm hearing from the members of the church, they don't even live in Ward One. They don't know what it's like in the mornings, in the afternoons, game days. 325 units and 200 some parking spaces? No, sir. One parking, one traffic light? No, sir, no, ma'am. So think about the real reason, the church, sure, it's a church, and it's all good, but the purpose, but look at the heart. They went for the money, but God don't need them to do his job, because the earth is the Lord and the fullness thereof. He doesn't need any help in what needs to be done. Thank you.
Janice Low, 2731 Woodland Terrace.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak in city council. I do appreciate that. I live at Galleria Manor Senior Apartments, and I represent quite a few there that feel the same way. With the existing problems that we already have with an influx of traffic coming up and down Spring Road, and us just trying to get out of our area onto Spring, it takes us sometimes about 20 minutes just to get out there to make a right turn. Then we have to turn left, which will take us even longer to get where we're going. But my major concern is the safety issue. With the influx of more apartments coming in, the fire department, ambulance, it's going to have a very difficult time just trying to get up in that area and also to get to us. So I do have a real concern with it. It's already, I mean, just overloaded with traffic, and we have a hard time, but I am not in favor of the proposal, and a lot of people that live in my area, we're not in favor of it. So please take that in consideration. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Robert Pennell, 1524 Wedgewood Court, Wedmore Court, I'm sorry.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. As Mayor Bacon has said, I live in, on Wedmore Court. I'm a proud, long-term resident, voter and taxpayer in Smyrna, and I believe this proposed development would have a very adverse effect on me and my neighbors and other voters that I know and I've talked to. One reason I'm proud to be a Smyrna resident is the mayor and council have had such a wonderful leadership role in smart, sustainable growth in the city. The city of Smyrna could teach a clinic for other cities in Georgia and, and beyond in how to do multi-use land development. We regularly, my wife and I regularly do business with, in the, in the Belmont Development, John Quill Development. We've admired the Riverview Landing Development. We applaud you. You have a track record, you have a wonderful track record. I estimate to you that the voters that I know expect you to continue your track record. You've got a great track record on multi-use development. You're being asked to deviate from it by this proposal. To be blunt, this proposal just doesn't pass the smell test or the common sense test. And by that I mean this: the term "multi-use project" is not some obscure Latin phrase. You don't need to consult law books and maps and studies to figure out, this is not multi-use. Sticking a little retail shop out in the parking lot in front doesn't make a 325-unit apartment complex multi-use project. It makes it a 325-unit apartment project with a little retail shop stuck out front. That's all they've done. If this were to be a true multi-use development like you've done with Belmont and John Quill and Riverview, I'd be enthusiastically in support of it, but it's not. It's a huge deviation from your wonderful track record of smart growth. 3% flunks anybody's smell test for multi-use. The voters in, that I know in Smyrna live by the common sense smell test, just as I do. We can tell, we can look at something and tell when it's not multi-use, when there's just 3% stuck out there. It's just this simple. If somebody brought in a black horse, painted two white stripes on his rump, and said this is a zebra, you wouldn't believe that it was a zebra, just because it had a little white stripe on his rump. That's all they've done here. They've stuck a little building out in the parking lot, no more substance than two white stripes on a, a black horse's rump, and said this is multi-use. They're, they're trying to tell you, this is a zebra. It's not a zebra.
Daniel New. Daniel, I didn't get a address for you, so you're going to need to tell me what it is.
I'm here to speak on a different agenda item, so I can wait till later.
Oh, yeah, if you want to. Like, you can sit on the front row if you don't want to. Gave him rock star seating, and he went back. Mike McNabb, 750 Austin Drive, that's a familiar name.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Smyrna has spent over 25 years becoming the city that people are proud of today because we've been improving the standard that we have for redeveloping the property that exists. As we stand here today, there's less and less property to be developed in Smyrna, and therefore the standards that we use are important. I won't repeat this gentleman's analysis because he was very eloquent, but 3% is not mixed-use. We can't play word games. This is not the Smyrna standard for mixed-use. It is not. Let me speak to the council members very specifically about three things. You should deny this request based upon the fact that it has been council policy that apartment complexes must reduce or replace existing multifamily aging apartment complexes. This does not take out any of them. Reason number one. Reason number two is because there's been entirely too many variances that are not consistent with the corridor long-term plan and the livable cities initiative. I would say to you that developers that want to come to our city and ignore our corridor and long-term plans do so at their peril. We have a Smyrna standard, and we ought to stick to it, and we ought to continue to evolve it. And the third reason that you ought to deny this particular request is because the density is too high. For those of you in the audience that believe that 14-second reference earlier, I'd like to see you after the meeting. I've got some investment property I'd like to sell to you. Let me just summarize, Mr. Mayor, in short, I'd like to say, not now, not here, not ever.
Skylar Atkins, 1302 Countryside Place. The man that was right in, right in front of the preacher.
Which I apologize to him afterwards.
It's okay. He forgives you.
And it's hard to follow the comments that were just made. Good afternoon, Mayor Bacon and council members. My name is Skylar Atkins. I reside at 1302 Countryside Place. I am the president of the Condominium Owners Association there, which has 212 residentially-owned communities. I am 31 years old. I am an infrastructure program manager by trade during the day and a proud Smyrna resident by day. A lot of things that I wanted to say have already been said here today. I would like to remind you guys that when we did the LCI study, our community really turned out for that and had a lot of input into that, and we're extremely involved in that. And this is almost an insult to that process, because the LCI study was meant to be, as the developer indicated, a blank canvas. It was to look at the, the Spring Road corridor and to identify what we would do with that corridor if the current conditions were not there, and to be an artist and to imagine this corridor as the pride and the gateway to Smyrna that it is. And I moved here three years ago, and like the previous persons, a previous person noted, I plan on dying here too, because I love living in this city. This city means a lot to me. It's a very special place. And a true mixed-use is not, you can't call something with less than three, well, they're stretching to get to 3% mixed-use on this. I mean, that's a stretch in itself, and I know that I'm under oath, and the other person was too, so to get up here and say there's only going to be a 15-second delay on Spring Road, which lately feels like Spring Highway, is, is really alarming, and that should kind of speak to the integrity and the flawed process for which they are approaching you with this application. I just want to remind you that I think that your precedent of requiring apartments to replace or upgrade the current ones that we have is a good one, and the planning department hit the nail on the head with this one. I'm very proud and consistently proud of our planning department and the professional staff that you guys have and the policy that council's had in the past. And when you think of a, a really great mixed-use development in the area, it's not in Smyrna, but there are several, several different ones, we could do a pot city market there, for an example, something, any, I mean, there are so many incredible things that you can do on Spring Road. We have an oversaturation in my mind at the battery of apartment complexes, and I know those are not in the city of Smyrna, but we feel the effects of that as a resident of Spring Road. And I have been talking extensively with my neighbors and the owners in my community, and they are overwhelmingly opposed to this, and we are quite a large community full of voters, and I appreciate the communication that I've had with council member Norton and council member Bluestein and with the rest of you guys about this. I just come to, again, express our opposition as a community to this development, and remember that we are watching and we expect the best for the Spring Road quarter, because it is the pride and joy of this city, and I'm excited about what is to come on Spring Road, and this is certainly not the plan, not the time, and not the right idea. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, now, I'm out of names, so what I, if you were sworn in and would like to make a comment, in no particular order, you step forward, identify yourself and where you live at, and make any comment that you want to.
My name is Shelby Fields. I've been a Smyrna resident for 19 years, and I do support the JLB proposal.
Thank you.
Good evening, good morning, Mayor and Council. I appreciate your attention. My name is Patrick Healy. I'm a Smyrna resident. I live at 5120 Parkwood Oaks Lane. I tried to make the font on this as large as I could, but I still need the glasses, so excuse me if I read while I speak. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the proposed rezoning request being considered today regarding the 3110 Sports Avenue property currently owned by Cumberland Community Church. I'm a, the chief executive officer and president of Peach State Health Plan, a large Georgia healthcare company with 600 employees and the headquarters right down the road. Obviously, I'm not here today in my official capacity, but I'm here as a resident of the city of Smyrna for the last 10 years, and as a member of Cumberland Community Church to respectfully urge your approval of the application made by JLB Realty. In brief, and as out- In brief, and as outlined in the staff analysis that you've seen dated June 7th of this year, prepared by the community development department, the JLB proposal meets eight of the nine specified criteria, and I'll just run through them real briefly. Eight of the nine. The proposed development is suitable to adjacent nearby properties. Second, the proposed development would not adversely affect surrounding properties. Third, the property is currently zoned appropriately. Fourth, the proposed development is not expected to cause a burden on existing infrastructure. Fifth, the proposed development is in conformity with land use plan. Six, the proposed development may enhance the architectural standards and aesthetics of the general neighborhood. Seventh, the proposed development will not create a nuisance or be incompatible with existing uses in the area. And eight, this proposal will not negatively affect the adjoining properties, general neighborhood, and other uses due to the size of the proposal in either land area or building height. Further, this request meets a majority of the zoning requirements of the multi-use zoning district. The only factor this proposal in its current form fails to meet is the preference of the city for a larger mixed use development, particularly in regard to the amount of property set aside for the retail space. Given the unique physical location of this property, which is essentially a 12-and-a-half-acre tract situated at the end of a single ingress/egress cul-de-sac, I believe it's unrealistic to expect that retail businesses will be able to draw necessary traffic into the location. In fact, as you may know, the church acquired this building after it failed as a retail space. The property at 3110 is currently zoned as mixed use. Affluent apartment residents will be well within walking distance of the battery and the stadium and the other retail establishments along Spring Road, which will support the city's vision for the Spring Road corridor. In summary, this proposal meets the overwhelming preponderance of the nine key factors outlined in the Smyrna zoning code. JLB Realty is an experienced developer with several other high-end projects to its credit. I respectfully request that the council focus on the big picture and move forward with approval of this request.
Good evening. I'm Joe Braun. I'm a resident of Smyrna. I live in Ward Four, also on staff at Cumberland Community Church. I moved to Smyrna almost 12 years ago, and over the past 12 years, I have, as many of the comments have said, seen the city transform itself over and over. In fact, I, you know, applaud all of you for doing an impeccable job of preserving the community that we love while positioning the city to become one that people love and want to move to. I think you've done a great job at preserving the, the real community focus of this while positioning it in such a way that people want to. And in fact, I would argue is probably the city that more people want to move to than anywhere else in Cobb County. And it hasn't always been this way, but Mayor and the city council, you've done a great job, and the citizens, of making a community that we can all be proud of. We've invested in the future of our schools. Everything from plants and landscaping to test scores and graduation rates have improved over the last 12 years. And I think that it's going to continue. We've invested in the infrastructure with our roads and in the public services, men and women. We've invested in our parks and over and over, the city has invested in its future while preserving the core and the integrity of what we love about this. I fully support JLB and the use that they are intending for this property, and I ask for you to support this as well with your vote. Thank you.
Got one coming down.
Hi, my name's Daniel Weetron. I live at 1539 Roswell Street in Smyrna and city council members and mayor, thank you. I think the proposed plan, I think it's the best plan for this property. It's on a cul-de-sac and it has serious limitations that have been brought up before. Major retail won't do, do well without the frontage on Spring Road. Major commercial concerns me about traffic. A lot of people have talked about traffic. I'm concerned about the consequences of more traffic than a bigger and bolder development that some of the city council members have talked about, you know, in that area, on that, in that property. I think that would be even more traffic count and more of a problem. Somebody brought up about, you know, they'd like to see a Jonquill Plaza or the other one that's by here.
Belmont Hills.
Yeah, Belmont Hills. You know, something back in there. I think that would cause more traffic than 325 apartments. So that concerns me. And I drive Spring Road every day. JLB, they, they build classy, high-end apartments and, and properties. I think there's a need for this type of property in that area. As I've talked about before, residents can walk to the major attractions, the battery in that area, without having to drive there. And the other apartments at the battery, you know, they live there, but that's not Smyrna and they're not really near as nice as these, so I think it would be a great addition to Smyrna. So I'm just asking for your approval of this proposed application and, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. If y'all weren't so afraid of the front row down here, you could...
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Excuse me. My name's Herman Taylor, and I reside currently at 1102 Ivy Ridge Place. My wife and I, actually, we come from the perspective of having moved in from out of state approximately four and a half years ago. And we, after surveying the Atlanta area, we decided on Smyrna for several reasons, some of which have already been alluded to. It is a neighborly town as well as being vibrant and diverse, and diverse not just ethnically but young and old people of varied interests and varied socioeconomic place. We feel really at home here. We love serving our neighbors. I'm a cardiologist and I'm involved in training the next generation of physicians at Morehouse School of Medicine. My wife's a psychiatrist. She works in public psychiatry here in Cobb County. And we just love this town. We also love Cumberland Community Church for reasons that somewhat overlap. I mean, it's very diverse. It too is vibrant and a very welcoming environment. It's become our church home. The other thing that's important to know about Cumberland is that I think it's led very well. There is prayer for consideration of every major decision. I've had a window onto that process as I was honored to be, be an elder, become an elder approximately a year ago there. And I, I'm very proud of the decisions that have been made about our move, and I rise in full support of the JBL proposal, and I think it bodes well for the future of Smyrna and attracting other people who are, who will find this place just like home. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council? My name is Timothy William Quinon, and I'm the president and CEO of Richmont Graduate University. My address is 1365 Kennesaw, Kings Park Place, Kennesaw, Georgia. I'd like to come tonight. The proposal that you saw tonight talks about 12.4 or 15 acres that are involved in this project, and even though Cumberland Community Church is the majority owner, Richmont Graduate University owns 2.4 of those acres. One thing you may not know is that Richmont Graduate University has provided for more than three decades high-quality, low-cost Christian mental health counseling throughout seven hope centers in the city of Atlanta. Throughout the years, we've had hundreds of Smyrna residents avail themselves of our services. We support this proposal, and should it come to fruition, we would continue to offer those high-quality Christian counseling services to all those in the community that have that need. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jamie Fine. I've lived in Smyrna long enough where my tax dollars have helped build this building, have helped, have helped pay for the sidewalks on Spring Road for a really long time, since John Williams built Post Village, which I lived in for a very long time. I have a question, Dr. Cardiologist. Is it safe to go running in traffic? Is it good for your heart to go walking and running in traffic and pollution? Is it? Do you recommend that to patients?
We should...
I'm just asking. Anyway, rhetorically, it's a walking community. It's a healthy community. We talk about running and walking on the sidewalks of Smyrna, which are beautiful. We've put a lot of money into this city to make it a livable, beautiful city. Our traffic is horrible. We got a lot of pollution. We've got traffic backed up from 41 on Spring Road all the way to the west side. You know, is it healthy? Do we want to go walking and running on 41 and Spring Road these days? Putting in extra, what, 500 so, more cars onto Spring Road? You know, it's, it's a lot of people, it's a lot of cars, it's a lot of pollution. I'm a little concerned about that. We've got beautiful parks. You know, where are we running? The other concern I have is the number of beautiful subdivisions that we have along Spring Road. We have no alternate access other than Spring Road. I live at the heights at Spring Road. A lot of our neighborhoods along Spring Road, we have no alternate road access other than to come in and out on to Spring Road to get either, you know, to the west side or to the east side to 41. It's a concern putting a large volume of automobiles further on to that. If there's an emergency, again, as someone else mentioned, emergency vehicles, and for us to get in and out, we have no alternative access routes in emergencies or otherwise. It's a beautiful development. They've done a nice job with it, but that's a lot of cars on that road with no alternative access for the number of residents who already live there. It's just a concern as a longtime concerned citizen. I think that's worth some consideration. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Dan Brown. I live at 720 Bank Street, and I support this project. My professional background is development manager, involved managing rezoning just like this one. So when I reviewed the staff report, I was surprised, it recommended denial because the entire report is a positive review except for the last two paragraphs in the 16-page report. Of the nine criteria needed for, needed for approval, staff says eight requirements are met. Those eight requirements were read earlier. The one and only criteria not met is because staff believes that proposal does not comply with the city's LCI study. There are several challenges and unreasonable expectations in the LCI. LCIs are studies in conceptual nature. They're not black and white. They're not enforceable to the degree of the Unified Development Code. Smyrna's LCI vision also requires the removal of Burger King, the Indian restaurant, and extended stay, which are all out of control of the applicant. In this vision, the current GC zoning is also ignored and the property is suggested to become 100% condos. Because of the current GC zoning, there are a number of uses that could come here without any public input or any regard for the LCI. While staff pointed to parts of the LCI as reason for denial, I'd like to point to a section that actually supports JLB's plan for rental units. Quote from the LCI, it says southeast Cobb should demand, or seize demand for around 500 to 600 units annually, with the Spring Road corridor being able to support several new rental apartment communities over the next 10 to 15 years, end quote. So the same LCI that was used to try and argue against apartments actually states there's a demand for more apartments on Spring Road. JLB initially proposed about 600 units for this location, which would have been in line with the demand alluded to in the LCI quote. However, they heard the concerns over traffic and cut off the proposed units in half to about 300. This concession met the recommendation of the traffic study in order to not overburden the existing traffic. In addition, the proposed right-of-way donation to encourage future interparcial access with its neighbors satisfies the LCI. In the end, we need to consider individual property rights, which affords the applicant the opportunity to achieve the highest and best use. If we consider what's realistic for this location, what's being proposed is the highest and best use for this property. Thank you.
We're about to wrap this up. I think...
I'll be brief. Mayor, city council members. My name is Ed Nolan. I've been here in Smyrna for over 20 years. I've gone to government...
What's your address?
3228 Millwood Trail. I was going to save that, but you'll see my point here in a second. I've been going to Cumberland Community Church for almost 20 years. I will say, when I first moved here, I'm originally from Buffalo, New York, I wanted to live in Smyrna and couldn't afford it. But all my friends lived here, and so I spent a lot of time in Smyrna. I basically worked my way. I started a small little place on 1476 Spring Leaf Circle and have now allotted my, myself the opportunity to live over at Heritage Vinings. I will say that I support this. I think it gives people the opportunity to come try Smyrna, come live here, come see what it's like with the notion of maybe permanently moving here. And I will also say that I remember before I moved into Heritage Vinings that it was a farm. So thanks for rezoning that property.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name is Alan Scott. I'm the pastor of Cumberland Community Church, and had some time on an airplane this afternoon to think about how Cumberland Community Church has found itself in this position. And I thought about in 2008, we just about closed. We couldn't figure out how to be effective. And with that prospect, we realized if we had closed, nobody would have known. Because we're on a cul-de-sac, you've heard our precarious piece of property. We have no frontage. Nobody would have known. So what we decided, instead of closing, we said, we're going to give ourselves away to this community. And as we've given ourselves away, we became multi-ethnic. What once was a dying white church became very diverse. We became healthy as a church, and then we developed a real heart for our city. And we, we think we've partnered with this city very well. We've done 28 Sundays where we've, you know, not just went to church, but we became the church by going out into the community, redoing most schools that you can name. 28 of those, thousands of dollars spent. We developed the collective, which is a jobs training program, a counseling center, food, clothes, childcare, you name it. Mayor Bacon cut the ribbon on the collective. We, we believe or motivated by the gospel, by Jesus, and how he came into our mess to clean up our mess, and how he gave himself fully away. So we just want to give ourselves away, and we want to do that more. We, we don't want to hide this light. We want it to shine on a hill, South Cobb and Church Street. We don't see ourselves as greedy. In fact, since 2009, we've given away $1.8 million globally and locally. And we just, we want to do more. In fact, as we speak, we're building a $1.4 million building on our new property to expand our collective space. Instead of just ministering to 250 broken, hurting people in our city, we will minister to. We will help with jobs, with real helps. We will help 500 people a year with our new expanded space. So we don't see ourselves as greedy. We had two offers on our property, two, that's it. Both were similar in price and in scope, and we chose JLB because we liked what they were going to do to our, again, precarious piece of property. We, we think that they'll finish painting the sports avenue landscape well that will benefit the city. And I know there's traffic concerns, but what I want to tell you, especially you, Mayor, is because of your leadership over the million years that you've been mayor. Smyrna is, you know, no longer do people use derogatory terms about Smyrna. Now it's one of the best places to live in the nation, one of the best places to live in Georgia because of your all's leadership, and I believe this project fits within that scope. So I am respectfully asking all of you for a yes vote to allow JLB and Cumberland Community Church to move forward with the opportunities that are at hand, and I say thank you.
Hi, I'm Jill Weetron, and I live at 1539 Roswell Street. So I am for this proposal in several reasons that Alan just said too, that we're at the end of a cul-de-sac, and residential is about the only thing that's going to work down there. You can't put retail and expect it to thrive. I mean, look at right up here. We're not thriving and we're on Atlanta Road. And look at... on Atlanta Road. And look at Belmont, and look at Johnquill, and they still have empty places. Now, if you stick retail back in the cul-de-sac where nobody can see it, it ain't gonna thrive. So the best use that I can see for that land is housing. And for the battery to function and not to fail, it's gonna need customers, customers night after night up there. And those high-end apartments, they're gonna be expensive. They're not your cheap ones. And they will have the clientele to be able to walk across the street, eat those dinners, buy from those shops, that other people won't be able to, not easily like, like they will. The apartment use is changing also. Well, you and I, or what I grew up with, because I'm older, what people went to apartments is when they got out of college and then when they couldn't afford housing. Well, today, that is changing. Millennials are trying out areas. So they are renting in different areas. And they don't want cheap apartments. They want nice stuff. So they're trying out different areas and living in those apartments to see where in the city they wanna live. And then the middle-aged people, with and without kids, I'm a Realtor, and I've got lots of people who, I wanna build here, but I already sold my house. I need a place to stay. So they are staying in apartments, and they don't want the cheap ones either. And then like me, I'm about, I am an empty nest and will retire before, you know, too many more years. I don't want the responsibility, and a lot of my clients don't either, of keeping up a yard or anything else. They want to be provided for. They want those higher-end apartments where they can determine where they want to go live in the next couple of years. So they're trying out areas. So apartment living is not like it used to be. It's a whole different game now. And I think the high-end apartments will be a really nice addition. I think the walkability for those people will be positive. And I know people are worried about traffic, but it's the staff study that said it won't have that much of an impact. And I would really like you to consider saying yes to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think you might be the last one. Well, y'all come on now. Don't be hiding out there.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening. My name's Andy Jones. I live at twenty-eight-thirteen Spring Drive. And I'm a native of Smyrna, and I'm a homeowner as well. My overall thinking is stewardship. And I don't think apartments are the best for our community because they tend to go down over a period of time, and we ends up costing the city, and we end up spending money for protection and safety and so forth. So I also like to point out that something that hasn't been mentioned, either here or I attended the planning and zoning meeting as well. Originally, this location was not intended to be a church in the first place. I'm sure you remember that it was originally supposed to be a sports and entertainment facility. And so hence the name Sports Avenue. So I would be, in my way of thinking, I think it should just remain general commercial, the way it's zoned right now. And I think that would be the best thing, as far as being a steward of the land and all the money that's been invested in it already. And I also see a possibility of extending Sports Avenue to Cumberland Boulevard to help out with the traffic with the way Sports Avenue is right now. And you already got the light out on Spring Road, and so forth, so on. So, and then my last point is simply, I think it'd be best just to wait on this decision until the city council seat is filled, until after that decision is made. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to express my opinion. I am, my name is Dzislawa Tonkova, and I live at eleven-eighty-six Rich Crest Lane with my boyfriend, my mom and dad. And I'm speaking on their behalf as well, in opposition of the proposal for the JLB development. We actually live in Ward One by the fire station and Johnquill Park. And I live eight miles away. And it takes me twenty to thirty minutes just to get on two eighty-five, and then another fifteen minutes to work. But the traffic is currently bad, and adding five, three hundred more units is gonna just aggravate the problem. My father, actually, he also takes two eighty-five and has the same problem, going to work and coming back. He's actually a graduate of the collective. And we really appreciate the opportunity. And we have plenty of apartment complexes in the area, not particularly in our ward, but adding additional apartment complexes is just, it doesn't, I don't think it works for us. Keeping the current zoning to where it is might be better. And it, traffic will definitely be worse, especially in that intersection, and it will, it will slow us even more. So I'm opposing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Stephen Jones, and I live at twenty-eight-twenty-three Spring Drive. Lived in Smyrna for forty-two years. And I do wanna point out something no one has mentioned yet. Quite often throughout the week, if you'll go sit in the Aldi parking lot and watch the traffic, by the way, I'm opposed to this development because of traffic issues. The left turn lane in front of McDonald's, turning on to Cumberland Boulevard, about four-thirty, five o'clock, it backs up, out of the lane, backs up to Sports Avenue. It blocks the first lane, and cars have to get all the way over to the right to be able to go straight toward the battery. And we're talking about going eastbound in the afternoon. We're not even talking about traffic going westbound. But ever since they have replaced that median and done that median work there, it's been a horrible backup. And to have more people, more apartments in that general area with just one light, it's really gonna be tough. It already frustrates me to try to actually go to a Braves game in that left lane backing up Spring Road. And then once I get down to the Nally Lexus, that left lane to go on Cobb Parkway, it's long enough, but it's also backed up too, just because of, I'm just talking about regular day-to-day traffic, not even Braves game traffic. So I just wanted to point that out and ask that you vote against this. Thank you.
Gotta be quick.
Thank you so much. Hello, my name is Phil Sharp, and I live at forty-one-fifty-three Gateway Drive here in Smyrna. I've been in Smyrna now for about five years, and I am a member of Cumberland Community Church. I am in complete support. Just a couple things that come to mind to me. When my wife and I first came to this city, we rented. We fell in love with the city, so we looked for a home and we purchased. And we, God willing, plan to stay here as long as we possibly can. The other thing I will tell you is, is that with three hundred and twenty-five additional units, three hundred and twenty-five possible families coming to this area, that would do the same thing that we did, that's additional revenue. That's tax revenue. I guess, couldn't we utilize some of that money to fix the traffic issues? Because that really seems to be the number one concern that I see. The other point that I would like to bring out, the outreach of Cumberland Community has literally been amazing to me. That is the reason why my wife and I have decided to make that our home. Everything that Alan had mentioned, that's real. These are real people in need. Last year, at the beginning of the school year, I can't tell you how many bookbags we gave out free to students. I can't tell you how many haircuts we gave free to students that were in need. So I just ask you and urge you to please consider this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Bacon and Council. My name is Latasha Trailer Pearson, and I live at one thousand one Afton Way. And I came up in response to the gentleman's comment about giving people the opportunity to come and try Smyrna out. And for me, that's one of the things I don't want. I want families that come and invest in our community, and most importantly, in our schools. My husband and I have been residents of Smyrna for twenty-one years, and we moved from apartments so that we could find better school for our children. So we want people that are gonna come. It's easy to get up and leave when you don't like it, or things are not going your way if you're not invested. So we want people that'll come. So I'm opposed to this rezon.
Anyone else? You're the last speaker, I think.
My name is Walter De Silva. I live in one nineteen-ninety-three Harold Avenue, Smyrna. I've been Smyrna resident for the last thirteen years. I live in Garry Apartments for many years. My two kids grow up here. This is the city that they know, and we love that the city. My son plays soccer at Johnquill Park. We know the area. My wife and I run on Spring Road all the time. Talking about the investment that last lady was talking about, our church, I'm part of Cumberland Community Church, our church has invested so much in our schools that if you hear, and I heard this lady talking about the, what is our vision or focus on our church's money, I will gently invite you to come and be part of our church. You will fall in love. I'm from Argentina. Cumberland Community Church opened their doors for me, to my family, and it's a multicultural church. We love that, and we love about that, about Smyrna, that we are growing as a community. Our church, Cumberland Community Church is that. It's just, before being a church, it's a community. And we want to keep investing into it. So I, I will ask you gently to, for your yes for this vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing portion of the agenda. I think everybody had the opportunity. I wanna thank, seriously, everybody, whether you're for or against it. It was very respectful, and there wasn't any yelling and shouting. And so thank y'all very much for the process. I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Derek Norton, who represents this portion of the city. Mr. Norton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I sat here and listened to everyone and the presentation and the comments, I've made some notes, and they're all over the page. So bear with me as I get through this. I wanna first mention some of the, address some of the comments that were made about the church. And I wanna say that I don't think there's any doubt about the admiration for Cumberland Community Church and what you do for the community and the partnerships that you have with the community. But we're not here to debate that. We're here to consider the zoning that's been put before us. This council is only about that this evening. I was sitting here trying to figure out, when was the first time I met about this specific project proposal? And I think it must have been fourteen or fifteen months ago, having lunch with Pastor Alan and Fitz, and talking about their ideas about the move and what types of projects might work. And I remember, you know, I remember saying, just apartments is gonna be tough. This needs to be a mixed-use project if it's gonna work. Over the last fourteen, fifteen months, I bet I've met with staff and JLB, what, can, half a dozen times probably, maybe more. I took a day off with Councilwoman Anolowicz when she was still on council, went down with JLB and the church to the midtown location to look at all the units and see what kind of product we were talking about here. Then we went up to Alpharetta on the same day and looked at the, not the vertical, but the three-story similar to what's being proposed here. And I'll tell you that despite several meetings over all of those months, where we've asked the developer for a mix of uses, to think outside the box, to include something that would be exciting for Smyrna residents, that are gonna have to deal with the increased traffic on Spring Road and the aggravation that comes with that, something that they could be proud of, something that they could use. And I'll tell you, I'm, here we are, however many months from that date of the first meeting, and the plan that's before us is hardly changed at all from what was originally brought to us. Instead of a plan that incorporates different uses, what we have before us tonight is this almost identical plan to what we started with. And I, I'll just be frank, there hasn't been much effort on the part of the developer to do anything that we have asked as far as making this a mix of uses, whether it's retail or office or whatever it might be. Instead, what we've gotten is why we can't do this. How come? No, 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 no. And that's been very frustrating to both me and staff. You know, when Mr. Moore got up here and presented on behalf of the developer, he said that, you know, we probably, we don't wanna miss this opportunity for this development. And I'd submit that this developer missed the opportunity to make the changes that the city and staff asked for. You know, for the citizens who suffered through all the work that was done on Spring Road, the widening that took over a year, as the battery came on board and we widened Spring Road, and we added the turn lanes from forty-one onto Spring, and we beautified that road, and that was, that was a year of hell, traffic-wise. I think they deserve better than this. I think they deserve something that they can be proud of, that they can use. You know, me and this council have a responsibility, not just, you know, we've heard people speak from all wards tonight, I think. And this is not a decision about, just about Ward One, just about near where I live. This is about all of the people who live in Smyrna and use Spring Road, which is, I would venture to say, everybody does at one time or another. And after we've just widened that road, after we've just beautified that road, with all of the units and the battery still not online yet, all of the improvements to be made, and then we wanna put five, six hundred cars a day coming out in and out of Spring, out of Sports Drive, I just, I don't know, I've said a lot of times, I think we get, with all of these developments, particularly on the east side of the city, near where I live and the battery, we get one chance to get the development and redevelopment opportunities right. And I just don't think this is it. I think we can do better. We're not on a, the city is not on a timeline here. We're being, I know the church is on a timeline, developer's on a timeline, but the city is not. And I, and I would submit, I'm okay waiting until the right project comes, or till the market is right for what we're trying to do and what we, the vision that we have for our city. So I don't know whether anybody else has anything to say or any questions.
You can make a motion.
I do. Before we do. I would like to hear from the developer himself, if you would, please.
Hold on now. We've closed the public hearing portion of the agenda. So we need, yeah, we can't, unless we open it back up.
I make a motion to open it back up?
Well, I'm not gonna, I don't know that I'll entertain that much. We've had plenty of testimony. We should have got the developer up here to begin with.
His representative spoke at the beginning, anyway.
But I wanted to hear from the developer.
Nope. I mean, this may be a legal thing that's gonna get us in trouble, but I'll open it back up. No, Ms. Blackburn, I'm gonna do it for you. I'll open it back up for the developer to speak. You need to swear him in, Scott.
I was not. I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Matt Holman.
Ms. Blackburn wants to ask you some questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Blackburn.
Matt, Mr. Holman, could you share with us just some information about your development and the ideas that you actually had for this property in this area? and the ideas that you actually had for this property in this area?
Well, sure. As we all know, it's 325 multifamily units. It's gonna be a mix of ones, twos, and threes. We'll have some threes, not many. I believe 4% is what we have in our mix at this point in time. The, we don't have frontage on Spring Road. We've got poor visibility to Spring Road. We don't have a good retail corridor to Spring Road.
Mayor, have we not already been over this? I'm just, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but you-
Well, no. I mean, councilperson Blackburn asked me to comment on the development. That's what I'm doing.
Thank you.
Repetitive, in my view.
Go ahead and finish, go ahead and finish.
These will be luxury Class A multifamily units. I've been through every complex in Cumberland Galleria and Smyrna. These will be the nicest units in that submarket. The retail space is being kept to a minimum. The reason being is because I don't think it's responsible to put 10, 20, actually, what, 40,000 square feet of retail without good retail visibility back here, because I will be forced to lease it to the first person that comes along. Instead, my, my plan for the retail is to build it nicely, to build nice retail storefronts, to build live-work around the roundabout, so that you got a nice-looking retail storefront with viable businesses, 3,000 square feet of retail that we don't have to lease tomorrow, we don't have to lease six months from now. We can wait. You were talking about waiting earlier on the right thing. I want to wait on the right tenant to come along that can be not only an amenity to my community, but, excuse me, if it's an amenity to my community, it'll be an amenity to the surrounding area. How do you do that? You don't do it with good visibility because you don't have it. Okay? You know, the more space I have in there of other things, my lender and my capital partner are gonna require me to lease it as fast as I can. That's not viable. It's not responsible. Okay? So, if I have 3,000 square feet that I can lease to a chef-driven restaurant, to a coffee house, to, someone asked me the other day if we'd be willing to lease to a, you know, a yoga instructor. I mean, all of these things would be an amenity to not only our community, but to the area. Okay? And that's, that's our vision for that retail space. And we can do that. We can make it a destination by keeping the rents for the retail low, so that we can draw in somebody that's not necessarily a credit tenant, somebody in the community, though, that we can lease that space to, that, you know, maybe they're a startup, maybe they're, they've, this is a repeat deal for them. But the bottom line is, it's got to be for us, an amenity to the community. Otherwise, we don't want it. And we can do that by keeping the retail to a minimum, and that's what we're doing. The live-work spaces were an answer to become more mixed-use. Well, that's what they are. That's what a live-work unit is, is mixed-use. Okay? And we've got a positive track record with those units. We've put those units in lesser locations and developments, much further out from the perimeter than we are here. And we leased those units really quickly to people that have thriving businesses in those units. So, the plan here is for luxury Class A community with the most high-end finishes and amenities in this submarket with vertically-integrated retail. And-
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
One question. When I met with you that day, I asked you about putting in elevators in some of the buildings so that it would make it accessible to seniors or whatever, such as Belmont did, because they had quite a few people that moved in there that I don't think they thought they were gonna move there to begin with. How many were you able to put in?
We added two. And they're labeled on the site plan, on the zoning site plan.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. You talked about the live, I guess it's the workspace, you know, that you had-
Yes, ma'am.
And the possibility of, like, a chef-driven restaurant. And this question may have, be answered by the community development staff, but is there parking that, available there for that type of a retail business in, with the apartment complex or with this plan?
Well, consent, all of the parking has been combined. So, all of those numbers would take in the consideration of live-work units as well.
I'm sorry, you did take that into consideration, where that works? Okay, thank you. Also, the other question I have, is there, like, been, I guess, consideration for another road? I think I heard it mentioned, coming out to Cumberland Boulevard in that area of the property?
Yes, ma'am. We have, if we could put the site plan back up there, if not, yet. So, you can see on the right side, the, what we've been calling the protected corridor. That's a 50-foot right-of-way. So, about a month and a half ago, through some conversations and taking the LCI and the Georgia Tech Transportation Plans into consideration, you know, we thought that, you know, we don't control the Colonial Pipeline property, obviously, and we don't control the apartments on the, on the west side of this. But if, for whatever, you know, at some point in time, those two properties are redeveloped, you know, we thought that, again, you know, through some advice of others and ourselves, that it'd be a good idea to put a protected corridor in there. That could become part of the right-of, you know, public infrastructure, you know, a street grid that runs through the property. So, you can see there that, you know, we included that.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, now, I'm gonna close the public hearing portion of the hearing. Turn it back over to Mr. Norton. But I want to say something. This is a, this is a difficult zoning in that we've got such a great applicant in the church and all that they've done to make our, our communities so much greater. But it's tough from sitting up here to have your staff say it's not right, and then your planning and zoning board unanimously deny it. You listen to all the testimony and you try to take that in before you make a decision. And I hope that's what this council has done, just taken all the information, listened to all the testimony, and then evaluate what the situation here. I hope that folks have not already made up their mind before we got here tonight. I'd be very disappointed in folks. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The gentleman who spoke from J O B was, was in most of the meetings that staff and I had with, with them. And just like now, with his, what he was saying there, he's, they're, they're trying to tell us what's best for our community rather than listening to staff and the unanimous planning and zoning and the representative of that ward. And for all of the reasons that I outlined in my statements, I'm gonna make a motion that this be denied.
Motion is second to deny. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, three to one, with Ms. Blackburn voting in the negative. So, this is a motion to deny, was approved, three to one. Item B 2018-163, Public Hearing Zoning Request Z 18-007, rezoning from R 15 to R A D conditional for two single-family homes at a density of 5.2 units per acre, 0.83 acres landlot, 559, 1478 Spring Road, PM Builders LLC. This applicant has requested that it be table till August the 6th. Ms. Blackburn?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to table this until August the 6th. That's 2018-163. Zoning Request Z 18-007, rezoning from R 15 to R A D conditional for two single-family homes at a density of 5.2 units per acre, 0.38 acres landlot, 559, 1478 Spring Street, PM Builders LLC.
And motion to table, need a second. Motion to table, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, four zero. Item C 2018-270, Public Hearing Zoning Request Z 18-011, modification of approved site plan and building elevations, 61.88 acres landlot, 61, 171, 172, 174, 175, 176, 289. Riverview Landing on Riverview Road between Nichols Drive and Dickerson Drive, Arden Companies. They're asking for this be table till August the 20th. I'm not sure, Mr. Fennell's not here. Who was gonna take care of that, to table till the 20th?
I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to move to, to table item 4C, 2018-270, the zoning request for Z 18-011, modification of approved site plan and building elevations at 61.88 acres, landlot 61, 171, 172, 174, 175, 176, 289. Riverview Landing on Riverview Road between Nichols Drive and Dickerson Drive, Arden Companies. And this rezoning request will be tabled to August 20th, 2018. Mayor and council meeting at the request of the applicant.
Have a motion to table. Need a second. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved, four zero. Item D 2018-257, Public Hearing Zoning Request Z 18-010, rezoning for R 20 and neighborhood shopping to RM 12, conditional for the development of 81 townhomes at a density of 9.38 units per acre, 8.64 acres landlot, 634 and 663, 1755 and 1837 Roswell Street, Quintus Development LP. I believe the applicant's here on the front row, Ms., we're not tabling this. We're gonna address it. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Quintus Development is requesting the annexation and rezoning of the subject properties on the north side of Roswell Street from R 20 and NS to RM 12, conditional for the development of an 81-unit townhome subdivision at a density of 9.38 units per acre. The zoning request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the June 11th, 2018 meeting, and was recommended for approval by a vote of seven to zero, with staff conditions and a condition to study Roswell Street for traffic calming measures. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning request with conditions, and the annexation, if approved, will be effective August 1st, 2011. And I'd like to turn it over to Rusty Martin, our senior planner.
Well, before you do that, this is a public hearing. Another applicant's here. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, that would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request? You just fixing your hat? I thought you, you're okay. Okay. Let the record show there is none. Mr. Martin?
All right. Good evening.
Hey, where you been?
I'm just happy to see everyone leaving the building right now. As Ms. Sadler Jones stated, this request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at their last meeting. They made a recommendation for approval by a vote of seven to zero. This property location is on the north side of Roswell Street, just before you get to the intersection of Wendy Hill and Roswell. The applicant is proposing to redevelop the site with 81 single-family townhomes at a density of 9.38 acres, or 9.38 units per acre. The rezoning request will require rezoning from R 20 and Neighborhood Shopping to RM 12 conditional. This is the future land use map. This is the proposed site plan. As you can see, the applicant is proposing to front 15 single-family townhomes along Roswell Street. The remaining of the, the remaining units will front on a new public street within the development. The homes on Roswell Street will be rear-entry townhomes, which means there'll be access from the new public street within the development. The rest of the homes will be front-entry townhomes and they will as well be accessed from that street. With this development, the applicant is proposing the following setbacks, a front setback 15, a side of 25, a rear 25. This is a proposed location with 20-foot landscape buffer. The proposed location of the detention facility. There is a stream buffer location located at the northwest corner of the property. With this request, they were proposing a deceleration lane with this request. Due to the stipulation to look into the traffic calming measures, that deceleration lane may or may not go away in, in exchange for some other traffic calming measures. And that'll be studied by the city engineer and approved by him. With this development, they're proposing a pool and a pool house and 19 guest parking spaces. With this request, there are seven variances associated with it. Of those seven, staff is supportive of six of the requests. Staff is not supportive of reducing the minimum floor area for the homes from 1,800 square feet down to 1,700 square feet. The rest of the variances deal with some setbacks and building separation issues. These are the proposed home elevations. If you were looking at the development from Roswell Street, and these are the homes that would front on Roswell. And then, these are the proposed building elevations for the homes interior to the site. This is the site as it stands today. And then, some surrounding properties to give you a little context of development in the, in the surrounding area. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning request from R 20 and NS to RM conditional for the development of 81 townhomes with the following conditions: standard conditions from Section 1201 regarding composition of the homes, detention, stormwater detention requirements, open space requirements, traffic improvements, street design and landscaping requirements. In addition to those standard conditions, we're proposing some special conditions. Condition number 16 deals with the setbacks requested by the applicant. Number 17 deals with the, the minimum building separation. 18 limits the number of units per building to six units. 19 limits the floor area for the buildings to 1,800 square feet, which is what I discussed earlier in the variance request. So, number 20- Number 20 is a minimum driveway length, 22 feet. 21 is the requirement for a fire sprinkler system in each unit. 22 requires that the architectural features on the backs of the home to delineate the individual townhome units. 23 is the requirement for a five-foot sidewalk along Roswell Street and then a five-foot sidewalk within the development. 24 is the requirement for a 20-foot landscape buffer along that western property line. 25 makes the developer responsible for the water and sanitary sewer improvements deemed necessary by Public Works. 26 requires the developer be responsible for any fire access improvements deemed necessary by the Fire Marshal's Office. 27 requires that the storm water management facility be located on its own lot. 28 requires street tree plantings along Roswell Street. 29 requires trees within the limits of disturbance to be preserved. 30 is a requirement for buffer averaging. Whenever, wherever they encroach within the impervious surface area, setback, they must also recompense that area somewhere else along the same stream. 31 ties the rezoning of the property to the site plan submitted. 32 ties the zoning of the property to the elevation shown. 33 is a list of additional stipulations agreed upon by the applicant. And 34 was an additional stipulation added by the Planning and Zoning Committee, Commission to deal with the traffic calming measures and allow staff to study that during, during the permitting process and, and come up with appropriate measure for those devices. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Martin? I failed to mention, this is a three-part process. This is a, the public hearing on the zoning. This is an annexation which will come next, and then we'll have the final voting on the zoning after it becomes part of the city. So I'll, if there's no questions, I'll ask the applicant to step forward and.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's echoing. For the record, my name is not Garvis Sams.
Right.
And I know you're all very disappointed that I'm not Mr. Sams and.
Not really, because he.
I know.
He will go on, and when he's got it in the bag, he just goes on and on.
He gave me a speech.
Don't get down to.
Y'all tell them that I followed it.
Yeah.
And, and we'll all just pretend that I followed it. But in, in all seriousness, Mr. Sams would love to be here tonight, but he's much happier where he's at. He's at Emory Hospital waiting for his grandbaby. Good stuff, good stuff, so. So otherwise, he, he would definitely be glad to be, would like to be here, but, you know, obviously, we've worked very diligently with your staff and. Oh, my name is Parks Hough, Sam's Larkin Huffin Valley. Thank you. And we've worked very diligently with your staff, and you know, your staff does a great job of defending the city in terms of their zoning, your zoning ordinance and future development map. And so it's very hard to get through them first, and we have their recommendation of approval with all the zoning variances that, that are built into the site plan with the exception of one, which is the 1,700 versus 1,800 square foot home, and we're fine with the 1,800 that they recommend, so that, that's not an issue for us at all. And then to go before your P and Z board and get their recommendation for approval is also significant. If I can go through the, the, how can I get the? The aerial, and then I want to get to the site plan. There we go. And I'm sure you all are very familiar with the property. You've got a multifamily complex across the street. You're within short distance of the Wendy Hill intersection at Roswell Street. You've got a hodgepodge of different developments in the area with some commercial and such. So Quintus looked at this as a great opportunity to come in with some single-family attached product for sale. We've got a stipulation in our letter that it's 10% rental maximum. We'll have all the covenants and restrictions in place.
In your picture, it looked like that front was gated. Is that true or is that not true?
No, that's not true. That's.
It's like a, a black fencing going down the front of it. I mean, I liked it, don't get me wrong, but I thought I was told that it was not going to be a gated community.
It, it's a public street. It's not gated. It's, it's just showing a fence, fence line on the front, but not.
Okay, and also, I understand that you've agreed to put in a sidewalk in the front?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Marilyn, do you have?
I, I got my speech that Garvis told me I have to say.
Okay.
But no, it, it, this is a, a great location for this. It's a great annexation for the city to add this into the city, and Quintus is very familiar with development, owning other properties on Roswell Street, so they, you know, knew what would be successful here. And so being able to bring this attached for-sale product into this area is embraced by your staff, embraced by your, your planning commission. And we have a very detailed letter of stipulations with tons of conditions on the management of the homeowners association, management of the amenity area and landscaping and all that, so it will be maintained in the fashion that, that you expect in the city of Smyrna. So I'm glad to answer any questions that you have. I have with me Mr. Jeff Carter with Quintus, who can also answer any specific development questions that I can't answer, but it's a privilege to work with your staff. It's a, it's a, very glad to be able to stand before y'all today with their recommendation and the P and Z board's recommendation. So thank you for your time and your consideration. And when you look at this and you look at the context of the property, what's around there, look at the thoughtfulness of the site plan, the fact that you've got meaningfully placed guest parking throughout the development, you've got a nice amenity package, and that's one thing that we always get into is like, is number of units and density and things like that. But what they look at from a developer's standpoint is you've got to have enough units to create the community that can support the amenity package, that can have a vibrant HOA. And so they don't look at it as stark numbers, but how do you create a community? And that's what they've done here. And when we go through the plan review, we're going to, and we've agreed to the planning commission's recommendation to add on to the traffic calming requirements, and we will sit down with your engineering staff and come up with traffic calming. Already talked to your engineer tonight and talked about whether the decel lane may actually be the opposite of what you want to do, because decel lanes are great if you want to get people off the road and keep the traffic going 60 miles an hour, but it's not great for traffic calming. So there may be some additional changes to that, but we are certainly agreeable to that P and Z additional recommendation. So I'm here to answer any questions you have, and I thank you for your time, and I thank staff for, for their diligence in this case.
You're finished?
Done.
Okay. Okay, the question, and, and Councilwoman Bluestein had asked if they were putting in the sidewalk, and of course, if the deceleration lane does go or if it stays, are you agreeable to do some infrastructure on that sidewalk that, so that in the future, if we wanted to do another project, that might widen that to maybe a trail or something?
Yep.
Would that be acceptable?
Yes.
Would you be willing to do that?
That's acceptable. I talked to your, your city engineer tonight, and what the recommendation was is that we would build the sidewalk to current standards, and then simply because until you get the whole path done, it doesn't make sense to have a portion of it done that way, but that we would design all the infrastructure so that there's plenty of room to expand it. So in other words, fire hydrants, utilities and everything would be moved back, so all it would be when additional projects come online that it could be expanded. So that, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does, because that area is being developed, redeveloped right now, and it's going to be a beautiful area. So that just gives it that opportunity to, when we're ready to do that, it's there for us, so thanks.
And we, we will put the infrastructure in so that can be accommodated.
I have a question to follow up with that, a couple of things with the sidewalks. I'm just trying to clarify, too, I, I guess, is it going to also go to, up to Wendy Hill or is it just in front of that development?
It would just be in front of our development.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. And the other thing that I wanted to ask about was special condition number 22, which deals with the rear of the townhome units, to have architectural features that delineate the individual townhome units. Just from the one, the rendering of the rear, it didn't, you know, look like that, but I just want to see if that's, you know, what that plan is, and will that apply to all of the units? Because at some point, they may be visible from Wendy Hill or, you know, or that other property next door, so that was my concern, to make sure that the rear of the units look as good as the front.
Yeah, we will, we will have, we will honor condition number 22, and we will be especially cognizant when we are in an area that may be visible from adjacent properties or Wendy Hill, although I will note that there is at least 125 feet, up to 250 feet of trees between us and Wendy Hill. So I don't think it's going to be visible from Wendy Hill.
Okay.
But when we go through, when we go through plan review, we will be especially, and I know staff will.
I was going to say, right now, there's a lot of trees.
Yeah.
I've learned that may not always be the trees, so that's why I was asking, but I knew it's still a, a distance there. But I was also concerned about the rear from the other adjacent properties on both sides.
We, we will take that into consideration as we design our, the rear of the product.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Andrew, you got anything else? Any question? All right, then we will close that section of the, of the public hearing portion, and we will go to E 2018-313, approve of ordinance number 2018-09, annexation request, 100% of owners requesting annexation, land lot 663, 664, 17th District, 2nd Section in Cobb County, 8.64 acre tract, 1755 and 1837 Roswell Street, Smyrna, Georgia. If we approve this annexation, become effective by August the 1st, 2018. Ms. Bluestein.
If anyone doesn't have any questions about the annexation, then I'm going to move to approval of the ordinance 2018-09, annexation request with 100% of the owners requesting annexation, land lot 663 and 664, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, having 8.64 acre tract, 1755 and 1837 Roswell Street, Smyrna, Georgia, Ward, Ward 2, with the effective date of August 1st, 2018.
Motion second to approve this annexation request. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 4-0. Item F 2018-314, it's the final vote on the zoning request, Z18-010, rezoning R20 and NS to RM12 conditional for the development of 81 townhomes at a density of 9.38 units per acre, 8.64 acres land lot 634, 633 and 1755 and 7, 1837 Roswell Street, Quintus Development. Ms. Bluestein.
Okay, at this time, I would like to motion to approve the zoning request Z18-010, rezoning from R20 to, and NS to RM12 conditional for the development of 81 townhomes at a density of 9.38 units per acre, 8.64 acres land lot 634 and 663, located at 1755 and 1837 Roswell Street, Quintus Development.
Motion second to approve this rezoning request. Any, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 4-0. Thank you very much. Thanks for annexing the property, and we appreciate y'all coming and having to sit through what we had to earlier. Thank y'all. Thank you, Jeff. Item 5, previous licenses, A is 2018-286, public hearing, previous license request, 2018-286, beer and wine pouring, 1529 Spring Road, Suite 3, M.L. Holdings LLC doing business as Hot Dog Factory with Dennis McKinley as the agent. So one of you guys is Dennis McKinley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Dwayne Martin, counsel to Mr. McKinley to my right.
Right.
Mr. McKinley has operated the Hot Dog Factory at the current location since July 2015.
Give him two seconds, I'm going to get Ms. Blackburn to get the, the background. I just got excited because y'all were finally up, but go ahead.
Okay. Ms. Blackburn, it's okay.
Come to work tomorrow.
It's late. Dennis McKinley will be the registered agent responsible for the sale of alcohol at the reference location. Mr. McKinley has been given a copy of the alcohol beverage ordinance and attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop. A background investigation conducted by the Smyrna Police Department failed to reveal information that would preclude issuance of this license. Dennis McKinley has agreed to abide by the guidelines set forth by the City of Smyrna Ordinance governing the sale of alcohol. Approval of privileged licenses for the sale of beer and wine, retail pouring for M.L. Holding Group LLC DBA Hot Dog Factory with Dennis McKinley as the registered agent. Staff recommends approval.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this previous license? Let's record show there is none. Ms. Blackburn, this is yours, and you got to talk till Ms. Bluestein gets back, because we're going to have.
Oh, boy. Wow, well, I'm going to ask Mr. McKinley to just tell us a little bit about the Hot Dog Factory. I see it all the time passing by, but I've not had an opportunity to frequent and have a hot dog, but now you're going to serve beer and wine, so it's going to be real special.
Sure. So Hot Dog Factory has been there since 2011, and I'm from Detroit, and, you know, I love hot dogs. And I was looking for another opportunity, and I just passed this place. I went in, I loved it, and I said, you know what, I need to buy it, I just need to change a few things, so that's what we did. And since the stadium is open, we get customers in there all the time before games, and they always ask us, why don't you have any beer? So that's why we're here today, I think, you know, that's what we miss.
So you're not the original owner?
Not the original owner, I'm sorry.
And, and how long have you owned it?
That's 2015.
Okay, good, then I'll, I'll come back. I mean, you're a hot dog man, I love hot dogs.
Oh, I, I love it.
Yeah.
Every day I eat it.
Good deal.
You have turkey hot dogs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. So I still have to talk till Andrew comes by.
Here she comes.
And here she comes. Okay. Well, Mr. McKinley, you've taken the required course, and you understand the importance of having this license to serve beer and wine, and hopefully that's not something that you'll take lightly. So with that, do we have any other questions?
I don't.
No? All right. With that, I would like to make a motion to approve 2018-206, previous license request for 2018-20286, beer and wine pouring, 1529 Spring Road, Suite 3, M.L. Holding LLC DBA Hot Dog Factory with Dennis McKinley as agent.
Motion second to approve this previous license request. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion. It's approved 4-0. We apologize for y'all having to wait so long, it's very unusual, but we'll come by and give you some business.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much. Item B 2018-292 is a public hearing, previous license request, 2018-292, beer and wine and liquor pouring, 2430 Atlanta Road, Suite 300 through 500, Cafe Restaurant Smyrna LLC doing businesses as J. Christopher, with Sean Bell as the agent. The background, please, and we apologize to y'all for having to wait.
Well, I wish you just would let us up here to announce our opening to all these lovely Smyrna residents.
Let's get the background.
After building, you know.
Sean Bell will be the registered agent responsible for the sale of alcohol at the reference location. Sean Bell has been given a copy of the alcohol beverage ordinance and attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop. A background investigation conducted by the Smyrna Police Department failed to reveal information that would preclude issuance of this license. Sean Bell has agreed to abide by the guidelines set forth by the City of Smyrna Ordinance governing the sale of alcohol. governing the sale of alcohol. Staff recommends approval of the privileged licenses for the sale of beer, wine and liquor, retail pouring for Cafe Restaurant, Smyrna LLC, DBA, J. Christopher's with Sean Bell as the registered agent.
Now, this, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, that would like to make any public comment concerning the issuance of, of this previous license for beer, wine and liquor? If the record show there is none, Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you. Would you like to share with us information about J. Christopher's? We're so excited.
Yes, ma'am. J. Christopher's, as you know, is breakfast lunch. We're open from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. daily. Most of our alcohol sales will be mimosas in the morning, maybe a glass of white wine for lunch, screwdrivers on Saturdays. As you know, Sundays, we can't serve until 12:30, so it won't be a bulk of our business on that day because we do close at 2:00 o'clock and still plan to do so.
Yeah, you wait till the next agenda.
We're hoping.
Yes, but, you know, some, if, when and if that does happen, that will help us out some. But it's not a major part of our business. It's come about because people do want the, the mimosas in the mornings and, and, and some of those things. So we, we see the opportunity of that to, to kind of build our customer base a bit. Based on a couple of locations we do have, it's about 3% to 5% of sales, so it's not a big factor. But we do plan to take all the steps. We won't be pouring until we have everything in place operationally, legally and everything else. So it's not something we're in a hurry to do. It's just a new venture for us that we're, we're going to be trying out.
Okay. Well, it's, you've, you know about our ordinance, and you've taken the workshop, and, and of course, we don't take that lightly.
No, neither do I. I want to make sure that no minors come in contact with alcohol or anything else in our establishments because we are a family restaurant.
Wonderful. We appreciate that. We're excited to have you in the Smyrna area.
Works nice to be here. Yes, ma'am.
So with that, Mayor, I'd like to move to approve previous license request, 2018 dash 292, beer, wine and liquor pouring, 2430 Atlanta Road, Suite 300 to 500, Cafe Restaurant, Smyrna LLC, DBA, J. Christopher's with Sean Bell as the agent.
And motion second to approve this request. Any, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 4-0. All right, now, I, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
J. Christopher, they used to be down on Atlanta Road, then it changed to something, some other name.
First Watch. Yes, sir.
Right. But I was in Savannah recently, and they've got a J. Christopher there. Is that the same?
Yes, sir.
So you're affiliated with that?
That's, that's actually the daughter-in-law of Chris, the Chris, and, and the Christopher.
So y'all are sort of, it sound like I eat breakfast there. Y'all sort of known for your breakfasts. Is that what the main thing?
Yeah.
Well, good deal. So you're up at Belmont Hills and you'll open up in about a month, you think?
Oh, we're open today.
Get out of here.
Today is our first day of business. Yes, sir.
Wow. Are you still serving the chocolate chip pancakes?
But y'all are closed. Closed.
So you know where to go to breakfast tomorrow?
Yes, just come on in. I'll be there tomorrow morning with my son Dylan. I drug him along when he's, he's in town from Florida.
What'd he do? Must have done something bad to-
No, he's in town for a couple of weeks from Florida. He stays with his mom down there, and I get to keep him, keep him next to me as long as I can.
Well, we're excited about y'all being here in Smyrna.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much. Thank you for being patient.
You're welcome.
Y'all are dismissed. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Item six, formal business, A, Resolution 2018 dash 05, approval to adopt a resolution calling for a referendum to allow citizens of Smyrna, Georgia to vote on whether Smyrna is authorized to permit and regulate Sunday sales of distilled spirits or alcohol beverages for beverage purposes by the drink from 11:00 to 12:30 p.m. and authorize subsequent sales to also enter into a contract with Cobb County Elections to conduct a special election for alcohol referendum. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, the background, then I'll ask Mr. Derek Norton to take care of that issue and sort of explain it.
The General Assembly of the State of Georgia has enacted legislation authorizing municipalities to permit and regulate Sunday sales of distilled spirits or alcoholic beverages for beverage purposes by the drink from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The mayor and council of Smyrna, in compliance with this law, wish to provide an opportunity for citizens of Smyrna to vote their desires with respect to the time such sales of alcoholic beverages by the drink can be purchased on Sundays. The voters will determine if Smyrna will be authorized to permit and regulate Sunday sales for an additional hour and a half during the time period of 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Cobb County will conduct this special election for alcohol referendum, which is scheduled for November the 6th, 2018.
Mr. Derek Norton, who is a member of the Finance Administration Committee, I'll ask him to take care of that issue, Mr. Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Ms. Sadler Jones said, this is an opportunity for Smyrna residents to vote on the so-called brunch bill. If there's no more comment or questions, I'm going to make a motion to approve item 6A, Resolution 2018 dash 05, approval to adopt a resolution calling for a referendum to allow citizens of Smyrna, Georgia to vote on whether Smyrna is authorized to permit and regulate Sunday sales of distilled, distilled spirits or alcoholic beverages for beverage purposes by the drink from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. and authorizing subsequent sales to also enter into a contract with Cobb County Elections to conduct special election for alcohol referendum.
And motion second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 4-0. Item 6B under formal business is 2018 dash 291, approved to enter into a governmental agreement with the City of Sandy Springs for prisoner housing and allow the mayor to sign all related documents. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, the background.
The City of Sandy Springs has requested their sentenced prisoners be housed at the City of Smyrna Detention Facility for a cost of $50 per 24-hour period per inmate. An agreement has been drafted outlining this arrangement. City of Sandy Springs previously housed sentenced prisoners in the Pickens County, Georgia Detention Facility. A term of this agreement is for the City of Smyrna to transport said prisoners to Sandy Springs court appearances, and Sandy Springs will transport prisoners back to the City of Smyrna. The chief of police and staff recommends approval of this agreement.
Well, I turn this over to Mr. Norton. I just wanted to mention, you know, the word prisoner sounds sort of harsh, but these are misdemeanor cases, usually traffic violations or maybe DUIs or things like that. So the felons will not go here. Mr. Norton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is similar to agreements we have with other cities, and it's recommended by Chief Lee. At this moment, I'll make a motion to approve item 6B, 2018 dash 291, approval to enter into a governmental agreement with the City of Sandy Springs for prisoner housing and allow the mayor to sign all related documents.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 4-0. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item made is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Approval of the July 2nd, 2018, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the July 2nd, 2018, pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the June 14th, 2018, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item D, approval of the services agreement in the amount of $12,000 and the addendum adjusting the audit period in the agreement between the City of Smyrna, Georgia and the Georgia Municipal Association for E 911 user fee audit services and allow the mayor to sign all related documents. Item E, approval of revision to personnel policy, RSK 4-0 vehicle slash safety equipment and authorize the mayor to execute related document. And item E, approval to close La Vista Road between Pine Hill Drive and Stevens Street on Sunday, August 12th, 2018, between 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for a neighborhood block party organizing coma manion?
Camma.
Camma manion. Okay. Pardon me.
Is that it? Here, motion, we approve the consent agenda? All those in favor? It's approved 4-0. Committee reports will start now with Ms. Susan Wilkinson. Ms. Wilkinson?
Oh, thank you. I was so ready to go home. I forgot about this portion. Thanks for starting with me. I did get a email today from Mary Moore, the librarian, and she wanted me to read some announcements for the library. So anyway, those are, one, number one is, this is the last week of this year's summer reading program at the Smyrna Library. The final event will be Friday, July 20th at 11:00 a.m. in the Smyrna Community Center. Magic Man, Bill Packard, will entertain us with magic, music and puppets. Bring your reading log so you can collect your final prizes. Number two is, if you're interested in a new career in construction, please visit the Smyrna Library on Wednesday, July 25th at 11:00 a.m. Build Cobb and WorkSource Cobb will be in the library meeting room to discuss their free services for job seekers, including details about the four, free four-week hands-on construction training and certification program called Construction Ready. And number three is about the city's birthday celebration is coming up on Saturday, August the 4th, and I hope everybody will come up, out to that event. It's always a lot of fun. I believe it starts at 6:00 to 10:00. Is that correct? And they'll have fireworks, and the library will be closing early that day at 2:00 p.m. due to the activities in the Village Green. With that, I yield.
Ms. Marilyn Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just want to say that thanks to all of our Smyrna residents who came out on Saturday night for our wonderful summer concert series, in spite of the rain. It was a great time, and it was good to see all the families out with, socializing and visiting and having a great time and listening to wonderful music. So look forward to our August the 4th city birthday celebration and hope that you all will join us then too. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Your Honor, I do not have a report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Derek Norton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a committee report either, but I do want to say thank you to everyone who came out, no matter what side of the issue you were on or tonight. We had a packed house of citizens who were engaged in the process, and when that happens, the City of Smyrna wins. So thank you, everybody that came out tonight and for being involved in your city's decisions. With that, I yield.
Thank you very much. Item 10, show calls hearing. We do not have anything. Citizens input, no one signed up. All the visits we brought for this body had to clear the committee adjourned at 9:44.